I have taken AP exams and I've taken them before this year. I've taken the AP exams without me. Schools have passed paying for them. And that's good for me because that allows me to have college credit for those courses. If I'm having schools like the Princeton, don't have their games required, I have a course. Unfortunately, the district has decided not to fund them this year. And I'm disappointed about this. The U.S. New World Report has ranked Rhinebeck High School 130th out of the schools in New York State. And part of this ranking system is the number of students taking AP courses. Seventy-five percent of that criteria is based on passing the APs. And twenty-five percent is just the number of students that take AP exams. So this number may go down if the district decides not to fund AP courses. Because students may decide that they are unable to pay for them. And that would be unfortunate. However, it's a true, it's a reality. And each year, Dr. Davenport reminds us how wonderful one the high school is and how well we're ranked. Thanks to our wonderful teachers that help us do well in these tests. Unfortunately, by not providing funding for them, this ranking might go down. Thank you.
I am Antonetta Sinkata. I am Jack Dyckman's mother. And first, I want to thank Dr. Davenport. We did have a conversation about what Jack just mentioned about the AP exams. And unfortunately, I did not have a chance to call Mr. Phelan, so I apologize first and foremost. Number one, I was disappointed to get the letter that was dated January 7th about AP exams. And that now parents are expected to fund these exams at ninety-four dollars per exam. I knew that there had been discussions about this prior to the budget meeting. However, I was not aware that it was not included in the budget for whatever reason. Perhaps it was an oversight on my part. However, I'm highly disappointed that we didn't get notification not in June when schedules were already made. We didn't get anything over the summer months, July, August. Not at open house in September or in newsletters, October, November, December. You're just informed of this and have six weeks to pay. Now, Jack is taking four AP exams this year. That means it's close to four hundred dollars, money I had not budgeted for. And I'm disappointed, highly disappointed. Because number one, it's coming at a terrible time. When holiday bills are coming in, unfortunately, my water tank just broke and it's several thousand dollars. That's, of course, no consequence for yourself, but I know that I'm not on the only boat in this. I know that there are other parents that are facing something similar. When college deposits are expected, you just paid RPI, five hundred dollars for a deposit, and will need to pay additional money soon. I'm not qualifying for any financial aid as was suggested that I apply for. I'm not going to get any, and I know that. We didn't get any financial aid for Jack to go to college. So it's highly unlikely that that will happen for these AP exams. I just also want to say that usually a budget lists when there will be things that will be put into the budget. And of course, there are times when you can see line by line how much money is going to be taken out for some things. But I don't recall seeing this. And I feel like there was lack of transparency by the district. And I'm highly disappointed that there wasn't more communication about paying for these AP exams. Now, I have another son to go through here. And I certainly hope, just as Jack said, that you will consider funding the AP exams. I did take a look at how much money has been allocated for traveling conference expenses, among a few other things that I certainly question. There's a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars that was budgeted for staff members of this district to use for travel expenses and conferences. This is a lot of money. What happened to, and I'm just guesstimating, I couldn't find the actual figure. I'm hoping that perhaps you can refresh the audience here. How much money was spent for AP exams for our students? The students that, quite frankly, make Rhinebeck look good. And I'm disappointed that money was taken away from programs that benefit our best students, like Jack, like a few others. Why are we penalizing our best students? I don't, I don't get that. And I just want to know what happened with that money, which I'm guesstimating to be about thirty thousand to forty thousand per year. That seems like a pittance compared to the travel expenses and conference money. Just not acceptable in my eyes. Rhinebeck High School students consistently perform well on AP exams, and I'm just asking a little assistance. It doesn't really, in my eyes, cost the district a lot to make us look good and to help students, encourage students to continue to take those AP exams. Some of them will reconsider. It's just too much money. I, I know that for some, it's a financial hardship, but they just fall under that or over that threshold of getting financial aid for the courses. Or they may not even be aware that that money is available to them. Because that was not included in what I've understood about the AP exams. So again, I'm just asking you to reconsider, please, about the funding. Four hundred dollars may not seem to, a lot to some people, but it is to those of us who haven't budgeted for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Coming forward and sharing your perspective. I appreciate it. Is there any other member of the public that would like to comment?
Hi, Sarah Rosenbaum. Rosie, I think I know most of you. I forget exactly how this works, like a question, or I don't know if you can answer. But what I'm wondering is, I've served on the Citizen Advisory Committee, the Long Range Planning Committee. And I missed the last meeting, unfortunately. But I'm just curious if there will be a point when the board is going to kind of speak to the findings, like to what it took from the Citizen Advisory Committee meetings and how that might inform future information. And then, just, just to segue, I also was walked in this meeting, curious about certainly the last public comment. Just was curious to hear what next steps are around budget and how citizens can get involved. So I forget if you guys speak back after these, or it's more just sort of this is a public comment and then you'll go along with the meeting.
Depending on the moment.
Do you want to note it? So that's my comment pending potential answer.
Okay. Well, I, at least for your question about the Citizens Advisory Committee, I'd like to take a shot at that, just because you weren't there for the last one. It's a great meeting, as they all have been. We got through a lot of stuff, but not all of it. So we're waiting for our facilitator, Lloyd Yeager, and we'll report out on this thing for Long Range Planning Minutes, to compile the rest of the findings, all the group work that was done in the previous two meetings. And he's going to put together sort of the list of recommendations for innovations and allocation of resources and get that back to the committee, hopefully, within the next week or so. And then we're going to be able to share that with the committee before we make the recommendations to the board for future. And as, as to the budget, we're, we're, it's in development, so it's just at the very early stages right now.
Will there be a public sharing of sort of what you learned from the Citizen Advisory Committee? Like, will that just happen at one of these meetings?
Yes, absolutely.
In March?
Hopefully, early March will be good.
I'd say my favorite is early March.
Any other public?
Yes. Quickly, my name is CJ DeGiaro. Kind of just on the back of Rosie's question, I'm just wondering about maybe a timeline. I think I'm kind of representing a few concerned parents. The word is that the budget won't be released, or the proposal, the initial proposal, won't be released until later this year. I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know if it may be partly to sort of quell the hysteria that happened the last time the preliminary budget was released. But it would be nice to just have a little bit of clarity from the board and keeping, you know, parents and teachers informed of what the timeline is. And again, taking recommendations from the Citizen Advisory Committee and just kind of keeping everyone in the loop as much as possible. We'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Can we have a budget calendar on the website?
I don't know if it's on the website. Yeah, I don't post on the website.
We can look it up. But there is a section on the district website under Board of Education tab for the budget. And it will, it will always have all of the most updated documents. The first document to be posted is the budget calendar. So we're not sure if it's been posted yet, but it has been developed.
That should give you timelines for the entire process.
Okay, and in a formal sense, is there, how would the Citizen Advisory Committee's recommendations, or how would they recommend, how would that kind of work into the development of the budget? And is there a formal process for that? Is there a timeline for that that has been established or does it still work?
Well, because we don't have the recommendations, there's no real place where it slots in. But it, those recommendations are going to be taken under consideration for development of budget. Absolutely. We don't want to waste anybody's time. Any other public comment? Okay. We have an opportunity to hear from the Rhinebeck High School Art Department.
Dr. Davenport, would you introduce?
My pleasure. Take it, please. I'm proud to present to you Mrs. Bear, our painting teacher, and some members of her painting class that want to talk about one of the most recent projects they completed in the class.
So thank you for this opportunity to share what's been going on in our painting class. Really know where to stand. We have all of our class here today. Michaela Torcello, Julia Axenholm, Emma Barry, Elise Flores, and Georgia Plambach, who represented us, are just at the jury Columbia Green Jury Student Show today. And it will be up at Columbia Green through the twelve months. So give us, give her a hand.
So for our very first project, we painted the number of tile alcohol. And we experimented, I mean, we learned there are ways to use watercolor wash. We made these samples just so we could have some good reference back and see what.
And stop, we want to say, sorry, blocking the camera, and I'm going to bring this over there. I need to tell you. Sorry.
We don't want to slow it back.
I just don't want you to, you know, pass on.
Go ahead. So we made like these sheets and papers, different media, not media, but using the different techniques. So we had something to look back on, so we can know what we're getting. And like we used very different techniques, like spraying, splattering, and scratching. We used wax resist, we sponged, we tissue dabbed, we used masking, rubbing alcohol, and just filth scoles on and on. Okay, so for our restoring process, we looked at another alphabet book that was all flowers. And that's what made us want to decide that we were going to do like some sort of practical painting. So we picked some flowers from that alphabet book. And we looked through the internet to see like what kind of work with the letter Z or X. And we also have to keep in mind like different palettes to include. We have to do analogous color scheme, use like three colors of the same family, or monochromatic, just like different shades of all different colors. So we each had to choose five letters to do, five or eight ones per page. And we made like this spreadsheet because like the letters are going to be on multiple pages. So we also had to keep in mind like to leave space at the bottom of the letters and stuff. And after that, we started like after painting, we had to scan our paintings into the computer and color correct them, so we printed them, they would come out as close as possible to our actual artwork. And here's one of our favorites that we put on the cover. This was my painting for the letter G, and I chose the rhododendron flower. And my painting was the choice palette, but there are elements of monochromatic in the background of the different shades of green. And for the techniques I used, I used iridescent medium on the petals to give it a little like shine and glitter. And I have the letter H, so I used my business flower. And I used a complementary color palette, but also monochromatic in the background, basically the different shades of green flowers being all pretty looking. And I left that bottom left, low, the corner of blank, so I put the letter there. And I used like a sponge technique to make fleas and bushes in the background. And I used lots of layering for colors I chose to shed that's possible.
I have a, so I have garden blossoms, and I used a choice palette. And in the background, like near the bottom, you can see I used rubbing alcohols. I had those little circles in the background, which just takes away some of the pigments of the watercolor. And I used Indian ink around flowers and petals, just to make them stand out more.
I did Jennifer Jasmine, and I used like the analogous palette. So it's like, I used green, yellow, and yellow-green. And I did in the background, stir it low, so like you just put down the paint and then like blow, and just it goes in all different directions.
So I chose the letter B, and I used analogous colors, so like blue, green, and violet. And I did a bunch of layers. And like my first layer was the background. And I sprayed bleach just to give it a more like distorted view. And then I did a bunch of splatters on top of that, and just layered them up. And for the actual flower, I did many like opaque lines to give it some more detail.
The benefits of having a small class is that you not only get along with all of your classmates, but you get to do work a lot faster, and you get to ask others for input. And you also get closer with your teacher as well and ask her for input. And there's a lot of communication with this project. And being able to have such a small class, you've got able to do this all by yourself. So in the end, we, our end product ended up being a published book. We made twelve of them. And we have one to present to Mr. Phelan. And for the rest of you, we have some samples of some of the, the prints that we used to help color correct. So these are all for you. You can take whatever you want. And, and thank you again for letting us come and share what we do in our painting class.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you, guys. That was, um, really, I can't wait to look at all that stuff. And, you know, the, the fact that you guys have experience with so many different kinds of ways to use watercolors is really, it's really cool. Great job.
Nice work.
Thank you, Mrs. Bear.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
This is, you, you got, you guys are, you're, you're our, you are our first shot at having presentations like this. This is something that we talked about as a board to incorporate into our meetings from time to time. And on the evidence of this presentation, I think it's going to be fantastic. So thank you.
I will borrow your book. You may not get it back. Okay, we have an opportunity for principals' reports. Oh, do we want to move that microphone? If you're good there, that's fine.
So good morning, evening, everyone. A few things happening at Chancellor, as I've mentioned. I was going to start off with our most student-involved spirit day we've had to date. We've been doing spirit days for a couple of years. We did a mix-up day on January 11th. A lot of people very excited about it. Staff, there's always a no-brainer, you kind of know staff's going to get involved. But I have to tell you, the students, it was like one of the most entertaining days we've ever had at Chancellor. I can even tell you, there was one class where, I'll, I'll give a props, Mr. Morrissey. It was the only one where every student in his class was dressed up. Except one who forgot, and the moment he realized, he went into the bathroom, turned his shoes the opposite foot, pants and shirt backwards, and wore it all day like that. I have to give him credit, he was awesome. But it really just was one of the, one of the best days we've had. People wearing everything from like, you know, robes, bathrobes, to, you know, just different socks, to like just every single possible thing they could be wearing different. But it just really was a great mix-up day. I just wanted to thank the staff and students for really making it one of the, one of the best we've had. Thanks to the RSF, we had our math science presentation for grade three on the 18th. It was a whole great presentation around the marvelous motion, which builds directly to the STEM lab activities and studies they were doing on even laws of motion. And then individual class workshops titled "Wolving Weather", where individual classes had an opportunity to get dissipated hands-on experiences to understand how weather works. So that was just a great day overall for the entire third grade, and thanks to the RSF on that. January 7th, Mr. Frischknecht and the peer leadership group worked with grade one students at Chancellor and the community room, teach them about Malagasy culture, which again, directly related to, tied into the Family Traditions Unit, which was in grade one. So each of the, each of the classes got to go in there individually. They acted out Malagasy folk tales, played traditional games, art activities. I had a chance to go and observe one of the classes, Mrs. Nelson, and saw all the activities and students working. So I wanted to thank the students, the students in the middle school. This week, we'll be discussing quite a few things at our grade-level chair meeting. One of the things is, Mr. Krebs and I were lucky enough to secure a model schools. People from both seats to work with the CLS staff in February, March. They're going to be working on the tie-up to the topic of writer's workshop. We spent a lot of, a lot of time in the last couple of years on reading and reading workshop, reading instruction, the workshop model. Obviously, we spent a lot of time looking at our math program last year and stuff. So this year, we felt in addition to, to make a couple of the math, in addition to kind of formal observations focusing on math instruction and getting, Ms. Lox and I especially getting a good snapshot of the tactic in every class across the grades. One of the other things we're working on, like I mentioned, is writer's workshop. So hopefully, what they're going to be doing is we'll be coming in in February to work with each individual grade for two to three-hour workshops with just those little cohorts and talk about the writer's workshop as it entails to each grade. But the idea is afterwards, I'll come back in March, March, April. Three more days, whether I'm going to work with those same grades, but do demo lessons for them. And then we'll provide some time for them to debrief. So it's, it's kind of like a, an Aussie consultant model, or kind of go back a little bit to work specifically on writer's workshop, discuss writing instruction at Chancellor, and have kind of a K-five conversation. So that's coming up, more in the fall and after we have our two weeks of time. I'll also mention, like we did last year with the math program, we are working on putting together a science task force at Chancellor. I doubt that I have two-thirds of the team assembled already. And the idea is to kind of take a look at some of the next-gen alliance we're doing with science that we possibly have a lot in common. Where if you think about, we're in kind of the fourth year of the state's kind of five-year plan of unpacking the next-gen standards in science, which I will say, I'll give them credit, it was a good idea that they kind of, they gave us a really clear five-year plan of following a couple of big work and probably workshops, kind of getting populated on the next-gen standards, bringing them back, and then certainly working with the curriculum director on some of those new initiatives. So pretty soon, we'll be meeting and starting to look at some program and some curriculum. Two that have kind of popped up, so the Science 21 is, is developed by one of our VOSEs down south from us. And it's really proven to be a wonderful program in what I've seen so far. So we'll get a closer look at that. That program is actually doing two grades at a time. So I think this year, they're implementing second, third. I believe they did a K-one implementation last year or ten, so that they're kind of taking, with the, with the Science 21 idea, they're taking a couple of grades at a time, planning them, then implementing them, and then revamping them to create a continuum. So we'll take a look at that as a possibility. Big ideas, the publisher that we just adopted, a math program, just came out with a hundred percent line of next-gen standards program in science. So we'll be taking a look at what their offerings are, so we're going to be working with them. So all that you know, we're kind of working to put that together. Also have a proposal, it's very, I just met a set of parents last week who had an idea to propose something small and manageable. Instead of a vegetable garden, we should have a proposal over a couple of years in the row. Several years over the past, I've been here. As you know, some of that's kind of not sustainable. It's kind of tough to get going, certainly a lot of the harvest, most of the harvest is happening. The food are in the school. Happy to say, there are things that can be done. On that note, when these, this group of parents came to me, we actually settled on the possibility of something we thought, oh, like a perennial garden, that we could directly do life cycles, do some cap analysis, and some of our curriculum that had to be utilized across the grades, especially some of the, you know, especially with the next-gen science that was coming. So they left with some ideas. I asked them to put a proposal together with the process, but that's kind of in the works as well. I don't know where that'll go. But I did send them all of our curriculum, and we're kind of taking over that and asking them to solve it. And we'll see if they come up with it. Also, some upcoming events. I'll mention the KDH discussion in a moment, but there's some upcoming events. The ELS hosting a second annual winter carnival on 1/26, sponsored by Class of 2020. We've had two students from that class who work closely with the case of Raffin offer our assignment for the second annual carnival, which will be this Saturday, 1/26. Sexual harassment, bloodmore pathogens, training with my staff beginning on February 6th. I know Health and Wellness, I'm on that committee, and we are working on planning a parent academy. Some final details for possibly in late February on school avoidance and emotional regulation. So a little more information to come on that. And I am working with a gentleman from Slapstick Science to post this as an Assembly K5, sometime in March, around much work and little effort. Which talks about open forces, things like that, there's a lot of different. We get two offerings, one of them is really specific, cuts across K-five grades. So we're going to have a lot of more information possibly in March. So that's some upcoming events. And then I certainly wanted to mention while I'm here. As you may, if you may know, we've been talking for quite a while about the KDH changing the age requirements. There's a lot of rationale for it, certainly can answer the questions you may have, and we can throw it on later this evening. And the idea being, fall of 2019, we move to November 1st as the birthdate for, if we fly by November 1st of this coming year, on 2020, it'll be October 1st, and then 2021, September 1st. So we'll be kind of working, working back that way over the next three years. With the understanding, so I have a press release I shared with Joe, a draft version last week, with the caveat also that, the understanding that because we're starting now, that parents of November who have children in November birthday will have an opportunity to, I'll certainly give the work and ask some flexibilities if they want to send their students, they can, we'll discuss that. So that's part of the press release, also explaining that for this year, we have some flexibility. So I just certainly wanted to, while I was here, any questions, I certainly, I have the press release that you wanted to share with you.
Could you just explain the rationale for moving those dates up and for phasing them in over three years?
Well, basically, you know, it's, it's kind of an effort to meet the academic and social emotional demands of the model kindergarten. Obviously, with the, the adoption of the Common Core and then now all the next-gen standards back in 1011, certainly a lot of the academic rigor, a lot of the social-emotional necessities of a field of education institution are starting to get kind of. certainly a lot of the academic rigor, a lot of the social emotional necessities of a field of education institution are, are starting to get kind of, there's some pressure in that environment for students that in many cases are four for several months when they start kindergarten in our district. So, that's in a nutshell, kind of the, the idea, giving them a little extra time. You know, we all know, and that, at that age, four, five, six, three months, four months, sometimes five, if you back into the summer, really make a big difference for students' developmental availability and academic availability to a kindergarten classroom. As you know, many of the things shifted down to kindergarten and first grade, and just kind of working with those students, we're seeing that this is something we can kind of create some liberty for, certainly create a better academic environment, and experience for students, especially first year in education, in public education, certainly. And doing some research, it turns out that over eighty percent of the states in the country are September 1st, many as a result of this. There are a bunch that are mid-October or so. There's only about seven states in the Union of the United States, being one of them, where local, you know, local decision is made on age requirement for kindergarten. But over the last couple, over the several years I've worked with the kindergarten team to kind of take a look at not only anecdotal, some of their data, evidence around what we're seeing as far as students struggling, and how long that's happening, and their access to the education, some of the rigor that's been, that's been shifted down to K-1 specifically. I need preschool, certainly some mandated by the state. So, it was just one of those things, and there's a lot of things we can do, and we kind of, as we're looking at curriculum-wise, you know, curriculum subjects and specific areas we want to look in, we're trying to keep that in mind as far as how it will affect our kindergarten schools. But this is certainly something myself, my team, and I think the subcommittee felt was something we have control, that we can really address for the academic and social success of our students.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. K?
Just the impact on enrollment, if I do win a monthly, is that kind of to smooth out any bumps or?
Yeah, we actually, it's, it, there'll be some, it actually works to the advantage, there'll be some kind of class size reduction, class size relief, I guess, as a result. Really only one year, because it turns out, one of the things we look at, one of the data, some of the data I pulled had to do with from School Tool, I was assisting kindergarten through fifth-grade students, the ones that are sitting in class now, organizing them by grade, by month, birth, birth month, and then kind of taking a look at who, you know, how many we had in November, October, September, kind of backtracking. We averaged around three or four per year. The interesting thing was, this was anecdotal until we kind of printed a lot of that. But I could, you know, I had said for years, I had so many families coming to me every year who have birthdays in November, sometimes October, it's definitely November birthdays, where, you know, families are sitting down with me, kind of trying to name, plan what they should do, how is the grade, they want more information about typical day for kindergarten students. And primarily, when we started printing them out and realized we had those numbers for every year for the six years that are in my building, you notice that it actually didn't work out to be about half. And you could tell because those November birthdays had, were a year later than everybody else's in the grade, which meant those parents who didn't speak to us, they kind of decided to hold it back. So, that's certainly a big part of the data that we looked at. There's another piece also, this being kind of one thing we can address. The other thing I already started talking to my kindergarten team about has to do with, I mentioned that typical day for kindergarten students, we're working on something we can kind of put on our website, and hopefully our district website, not only a length of Chancellor. That keeps kind of a check, you know, can your child do this, are they ready for this? And that would be academic piece, but the transition, sitting quietly, a lot of the developmental stuff too. So, hoping to kind of give parents a little more insight on what's expected as well. We used to really rely very heavily, I think, on those yard stakes, which was a great, great tool that I even used the first couple of years I was here, but let's see, not at the Common Core team. We don't really have a version of that at this point. So, uh, so there's some other kind of multi-prime approach, but anyway, that's kind of the data we're looking at. So, there'll be some slight decrease by about three or four students, and then we'll take them on. So, that's only really the first year.
Yeah.
I know it's been a while since we've been making this change, and I appreciate all the work that your staff did to make it happen finally, and it's in the best interest of the students. I would only say, too much communication, can't be too much communication. People plan for this, and they, you know, budget for this, and they decide, you know, the students go to kindergarten, so they know more information, the more they know, it won't be what they expected, or it might be changed.
Absolutely, that's actually a perfect transition to one thing I want to mention, I forgot to mention that was how we do it. Because historically, we have about seven or eight local preschools we send this out to. I send it to Joe's office, and Whitney is kind enough to send it out to other, you know, groups that, that tape on press releases. I'm going to be putting it out in my newsletter, we're sending it out to school messenger, so we'll figure out Joe has it on his server, depends on however we want to work that out. But I agree with you, I think there's many ways we can put it out. And I, I appreciate you thanking me, but I got to tell you, one of the things I got a lot of support from the subcommittee was that kind of flexibility the first year, knowing that that's exactly, for me, the toughest thing about this was trying to find a way that would help the community the most, which is really, really the core reason we're doing it in the first place. But for that reason, making sure that we have some flexibility for our families, so we'll be doing that. And anything you can think of that may be, you know, anything pops in your head, please shoot me an email that we're going to try to find as many ways to put this out. And if you guys do approve it, I have to have you be ready to kind of roll very soon, in the next day or so. Remind you, instead of registration period, which they register any time, but a little bit longer, so. So, any additional ideas or recommendations, please.
Any other questions about kindergarten or anything else?
I have just one question for you about your science task force. So, are these science lessons being dropped into the general ed classroom? And so, they're in addition to all of the launch classes that David Wolfen's teaching?
It actually, the great thing about Project Leadway, it's already been, they kind of, the rare occasion, they got, they got ahead of the state, and really happens the next-gen align from the beginning. Because I got to tell you, I think, you know, from my experience, unless I'm mistaken, the science, the next-gen science standards, I think, sat in a committee longer than any, we have a lot of information, Marvin was always downloading, we were sending David to some of these workshops as well, or downloads at Bosse's. So, the good thing is, Project Leadway is actually aligned. So, along those lines, we're in a strange place because, you know, we designed a curriculum years ago, really it was a conscious effort. We don't want to get out in front of this day, and this is going to change and change. So, with us creating the curriculum we have now, with integrating English and social studies in science, it's more embedded within our language arts. Even though, you know, we're able to take it off and do separate sciences, social, separate social studies, the way we've organized our curriculum really isn't conducive to just all these, these outside lessons. So, before we start kind of modifying what we have existed, in addition to what we've already done with Project Leadway, the hope is, we're going to take a look at kind of how they've aligned their scope and sequence. And we're going to use more than the two I mentioned, but those were just two that came up, two programs that have a scope and sequence. How does that fit into what we're already doing in our existing STEM lab, which will align by grade as well? And then what do we need to, it'll, we'll definitely have work to do to decide what's going to supplement what he's doing in STEM lab. I don't expect it at all to supplant, because it's actually top-level stuff that we would, we would just do anyway, that we're kind of already doing in STEM lab. So, it would be more along the lines of kind of like these two years ago with math curriculum, like from March to March, because the test was March, so you change the scope and sequence. That was years ago. We're, we're, we're going to have to do something along those lines, even if we adopt a scripted, how to use that, of course, it's not like math, but a scripted program, where there's a clear scope and sequence. We'll see how it works in STEM lab, and then maybe how it's associated with SDP. But that's definitely something we'll be talking to those. The good thing about this is, we have these reps, basically even though we're doing presentations with teams, with me and fifteen staff, and David will definitely be on that. He's there, he's on the map, he's definitely on this as well. So, that's going to be a major part of the conversation, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, there, a volunteer.
Good luck.
Been fourteen years in one place. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start this, this evening's report by going back a little bit into December and just giving you two very quick updates about a couple of service learning projects, some for a club to run just prior to the winter break. Our ninth annual little bit for the NICU, I know I spoke about that when we, when we met in November. They spent the entire, the Art Club and others, because they really bring a number of other people from the community and, and both of the other schools, the Art Club and others donated more than a hundred, actually a hundred and eight blankets and hats to the Astor Brothers NICU on Christmas Eve. So, that's a, like I said, this is the ninth year we've been doing that. That's a, it's a wonderful activity that we plan to continue doing in the future. In addition to that, the Student Council Food Drive donated more than 750 items, which we were able to donate for, to the Shepherd Food Ranchery. So, we run both of those programs annually, we have a couple more that we're, that we're planning as we move into the late winter and spring this year. But we're really proud of the work of our students through their service learning projects. Again, going back into December a little bit, just reporting out on something. We held our first, again, old dog Nutrex, it's very difficult for, for the U.S. to change, but we held our very first, in my time here, combined band and chorus concert this past December. And it was just fantastic. And just to share a little anecdote, which, which made me realize just what a wonderful opportunity it was. We had, we, as we do with every coral concert, we had combined six, seven, eight number at the end of the, at the end of the show. And again, our band members are not usually there to see the chorus concert. We had, we had an eighth-grade student, a very, very shy young man, who, as it turns out, has absolutely amazing voice, and, and performed a solo during this combined number at the end of the, at the end of the show. And the adulation from, from some of his classmates, classmates that are in the band and, you know, clapping him on the back and congratulating him, and just the looks of shock on their faces that he just opened up like this, made it all worthwhile, and is certainly something that we're going to continue to do in the future. As Brett mentioned, members of our Peer Leadership Club went over to CLS early in January. They worked with the first-grade students and taught them about Malagasy culture. I've reported out on this before, and then we continue to look for opportunities to partner our middle school students, working with our younger students over at CLS. To date now, this year, they've worked with K-1 and 2 students, so we have three, four, and five to go. And next up, they're going to be working in fourth-grade classes in late February, early March, teaching about the takeover of New Netherland by the English forces as part of the fourth grade's Dutch history. On January 10th, we welcomed Thomas Grimes to the district. He's a twenty-year veteran of the NYPD. And since his retirement in, in 2007, he founded an organization called New York Final Speakers, and has been presenting to students and parents on internet safety, cyberbullying, and digital citizenship ever since. He presented to the high school, the middle school, and then a game evening presentation to parents. All three of, I, I had the benefit and the opportunity to see all three presentations. I was really interested in how he changed the presentation to, to fit his target audience, particularly from a developmental standpoint between the middle school students, the high school students, and the parents. All three presentations were very powerful, very moving, very disturbing in many ways, and some of the feedback that we've received from, from, you know, students shared that point, but full of very important information to keep our students, to keep our students safe, important information for themselves, to keep themselves safe, as well as parents that evening. All of the, all of the feedback that we received was overwhelmingly positive. An parent come up to me, he had a presentation that evening, and said it was the best thing that we've, we've ever offered here in the district. And I thank Dr. Davenport for, for helping me set that up and providing our kids with that opportunity. An update on our ongoing discussions regarding social emotional learning. As I've talked to you before, Alice Coleman is working with our sixth-grade students at the end of this week. This will mark the end of the second quarter, so she's now worked with another twenty-five percent of our sixth-grade population. In addition to working with our sixth-grade students, last month, we had her meet with the remainder of the sixth-grade team, really to talk about transferring some of the learning that they're doing in home and careers classes to the Mississippas, and bringing that, having a common language across the entire sixth grade, in all of their content area classes, as well as some of their special area classes. And in addition to that, I invited Miss Coleman to speak with our, our faculty as a whole, and we're looking for ways to take some of her work and work we're doing with the sixth grade, and expand that out to seventh, eighth grade as well. And in addition to that, a number of classroom teachers, in collaboration with our support staff, are piloting a number of programs for the purpose of increasing focus and decreasing anxiety, particularly as it pertains to test-taking. Carmella Fattin has done, and done lessons in sixth grade, in sixth-grade students. She's also worked with some of the eighth-grade students on a journaling activity prior, prior to taking tests. And both the math teachers in sixth grade and in eighth grade are, are looking to pilot that as we go forward into the springtime. And in addition to that, we have Megan Rodier, who is partnering with Jen Remo, and going into our health classes in the seventh grade, and doing some mindfulness techniques with, with the seventh graders, in hopes of helping to reduce anxiety. And then finally, with the support of Dr. Davenport, the assistance of him and the high school faculty, the middle school, the high schools are investigating the possibility of implementing an advisory program at both the middle school and high schools. So, that's something, it's in the early stages at this point, but we're excited to begin those discussions. In other news, thanks once again to the support of the Runcex Science Foundation. Our eighth-grade students are traveling to Florida College tomorrow to participate in the Day of Science. Working with our students and professors, they'll participate in a number of hands-on activities. In, in some years, we've had a theme, in others, we haven't. We, we had a theme this year, and it's around water conservation. Students will learn that the effects of roads, road salt in our lakes and our streams, pre-epo as of, as of today, and this past weekend, participate in a contaminant spill simulation, all learning about pollution, as well as learn how to measure the tripidity, salinity, and peewity of liquids. This Friday and Saturday, sixteen of us students will participate in the Duchess County Educators Association Outlaw County Festival. These students were selected based on their NISMA solo scores from last year, and six students for our program in middle school is, is a high number, and higher than we have in the past several years. On February 9th, several of you of us students will be participating in the eighth grade, in the eighth grade science fair. You recall that this science fair is a combination, a combined science fair, Buckley Middle School, Edelen and Adamie Middle School over in Red Hook. Students will present their original research projects from hypothesis to data collection and analysis, findings, so a panel of judges to compete for prizes and it is the sixtieth annual Duchess County Regional Science Fair, Duchess Community College later this spring. This year, participation happened, participation has risen over the last couple of years, and this year, this is supposed to also open it up to sixth and seventh grade students. We have a couple of sixth and seventh grade students that are participating as well. And finally, just because I'm going to take the opportunity, you know, in a public meeting, to put the, the plea and the call out there. Plans are underway for our annual Artists in Action Day. You recall that the last several years, this has been a real struggle, struggle to build a presenter pool, and, and this day doesn't run. You'll also recall that a couple of years ago, we weren't able to run this day, because we couldn't develop that presenter pool out of parents and community members. So, we're just putting it out there now, and we sent a lot of information home to families, parents, and community members later this week at our Artists in Action Day. But please, if you know any artists out there that are willing to come and share their talents, I believe the date is March 26th, Friday. If you don't hold that, hold me to that date, more information will come out at the end of this year. But please put that out there and have them contact me if you're willing to come in and share the talents of your students. Thank you.
Question, please.
John, will you just send us a reminder when you know the, when you're sure of the date, so that we can reach out to people we may know? That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that I'll share that with you as soon as I send it out.
Thank you.
John, hang on, I've got a couple more questions. On artists in action, typically, how many artists are you looking for, and how broad do you go in terms of your definition of art? do you go in terms of your definition of art?
Our target is between twenty and twenty-five presenters. We've had a couple less, we've had a couple more, but that's really the number that gives us nice small groups and works well in our rotations. And it's very broad. Very broad.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Put a write on the coat tails of my student artists. Everyone get a chance to look through the book?
We didn't see the book, but we saw the print.
I'm going to break the first teacher role and hand the book out so you look at that rather than listen to me. So I'll start as usual with building up a planning team. We're continuing to develop plans for our community read, and its most recent iteration, whole set of work plans suggest or invite both our incoming ninth graders and incoming twelfth graders to read the same text. And that way, those groups will have something in common, and hopefully that will foster a mentoring relationship between our seniors and our freshmen. As you are no doubt aware, on Friday, our second annual HAWK talks will take place. As you recall, HAWK talks are based on a passion project that our elementary and middle school students complete. They write a research paper on a topic they're passionate about, and then they develop that paper into a talk. They deliver those talks in small classrooms. Our teachers select a number of those presentations, four or five, which students will share with all of their peers on Friday, and a winner will be selected in that competition. You're all, of course, accordingly invited to that HAWK talk. And our science department, thanks to Enth and the Reinbeck Science Foundation for the support of the embodied art project in our anatomy classes. For weeks, students worked with choreographers to identify muscle groups and to drill down to understand their functions. And the culmination of this work was that they're creating musculature on some skeleton models. And those models are currently residing in two display cases in the new wing. I'd go to Torrance if you have a couple minutes and want to check those out. They're really quite impressive. In our math department, our teachers are going to pilot the use of, this is new language for me, TI Tech Systems Instruments Innovator Talks. And as I understand it, these are devices which allow students to use their graphic calculators to learn basic coding, design, programming skills. And once students have mastered that, there are, this is my language, TI Talks, there are robots that the school, very expensive robots, the school can purchase, and the students can use their graphic calculators to program robots in the math classes. So we're looking forward to seeing our schools engage those activities. Our teachers are also working with a website program called GeoAlgebra. And if you'll, it's only going to take a minute because I sat in the class looking at what this program can do, it's really geared towards discovery, learning model, and mathematics. So for example, rather than memorizing trigonometric or geometric facts, students discover. So most recently, students discovered in one class I was sitting in, that if the angle of a triangle remains constant, it doesn't matter how long the sides are, the ratio of those two sides will remain constant. Now, forty years ago, I'm sure I learned that, memorized it, and then promptly forgot it. But our students, because of this sort of discovery and learning, are going to discover this principle. And once you have that, once you discover it, then it's yours to you to have. And that's the basis of trigonometry as a whole. So very impressive, very exciting to see our students engaging in that way. In our art department, as you heard, we had two of our student artists accepted into a jury art show at Columbia Green Community College, went to the reception early in the day. All works are really fantastic and would look to have such talented, hardworking student artists. In the music department, going back to December, our men's and women's choir performed at the annual the Center for Children's Conference practice for the first time in my time here, as Mr. Henderson mentioned, a joint concert at high school level between both the band and chorus culminating in joint performance. And it was really something special to see our student instrumentalists and our student vocalists being conducted at the same time by Ms. Natalie and Mr. Lees. It's really a thrilling moment. We look forward to other joint concerts. Our men's, excuse me, our chorus and our band are now planning a joint field trip to Broadway to see a Broadway show called The Band's Visit. I looked up that show, and it's about an Egyptian police band derives from Israel to play a concert. After a mix-up at the corner, they're sent to a remote village in the middle of the desert and that's the show. It's very powerful, as I understand.
Super shout.
In our physical education department, as a culmination of the volleyball unit, students will compete in the volleyball tournament this Thursday. This allows our students to demonstrate their skills in coaching, officiating, and playing. And that's one of the focuses of our PE department, not only the performance of that activity, but to understand the rules, understand strategy, and understand coaching as well. With Mr. Jensen's support, we're piloting the use of a Dell interactive touch monitor. We have one of these devices and they're to replace smart boards, and so far, very positive or beautiful from the academy students. I was able to pop in a class and see one in action, and it's, everybody's good and everybody's clear as a smart board. We already have a request for another one in another classroom. In the whole curriculum around the National Health Society, we've conducted twenty-two students for our global chapter. At our drama club, they've conducted a successful talent show on November 28th. And on January 31st, the drama club and creative writing club will host a coffee house, which is a night of poetry, monologues, and recitations. The fifth edition of our school newspaper, Reinbeck Reality, will be coming out soon. And by soon, I mean tomorrow. So we're very happy to see that. In the Model U.N., our Model U.N. members have been invited by the principal legal officer of the Special Committee on the Charter and Strengthening of the Role of the Organization to attend their Albany meeting on February 19th, and also after that meeting to take a tour of the U.S. So that's a very exciting opportunity for our Model U.N. students. In the student council, our student council collected 750 cans for the Claudio Piers can drive, and it collected over $300 to be donated for relief of the victims of the campfire in the middle of California. Our gender equity club will be sending a group of students to the Lusshen Earth Conference as sponsored by the Grace Smith House's conference on the Health of Relationships. And this will be the second unit that we're sending contingent of our next students. That's an update.
Any questions for Dr. Davenport?
No questions, but thank you for sharing your art students with us. It's a joy to have them here.
They do incredible work. Ably guided.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Oh, I have one question. The HAWK talks on Friday, what time is that starting?
Double check, I believe it's three, it's two and three, and three starts at 8:44. I'll send it in.
Thank you, Matt. All right. We're moving on to board committee reports. So I think we start with audit.
That's me. The audit committee met, we reviewed corrective action plan that was brought forward from the 2018 external audit. The first one you all know about is the accounting software is not being supported anymore and needs to be upgraded. That is in progress. The second one is that special education fund has a negative balance, which we've also discussed in the past, and we've got a ten-year plan, I guess, of zeroing that out. So that's part of your agenda items to prove that corrective action plan, to get it up to Albany. The second thing we also talked about was an administrative audit to be done before the budget season starts this year, so we can get a better sense of how are we spending some money. So that's going to include everything, administrators, staff support, district office, Quest Star is a company that we saw at the NISMA conference, and it is aidable through BOSI, so we'll get some of that money back. Waiting to get a scope of work done for that, to get that ball rolling. Next meeting hasn't been set yet.
Any questions for audit? When are you hoping to get that scope of work out?
I had gotten sick last week. I was hoping that we have it done by the end of this week, but it's kind of put me behind the schedule with everything else going on, so hoping to have a draft out to you by this Friday so you can agree that.
That'd be great.
All right. Communications.
That's me. So legislative meetings, I did not go to. Have they all happened as well? Or we still have to?
Two.
No, two or three happened, yeah. Okay, so some of this is now, stuff that's already happened down there, but we discussed which issues would be our top priorities to bring from local legislators. We plan to bring up the tax levy cap and ask about exemptions, such as for certain special education reimbursements, as well as statey, non-state approved, special education placements. Joe was asking Tom to prepare comparison of what most state-run districts get for reimbursements compared to what we get. And we also were going to ask about funding for student health and safety efforts and social and emotional learning programs, and thank the legislators for their class support and to talk about some of the projects funded by the lady. We then moved on to talking about promoting the district, particularly the Facebook page. Liz shared a Facebook post to the Reinbeck Moms and Dads page and saw an immediate bump. What was it, in the first thing? It was like thirty?
Fifteen, twenty dollars?
Yeah, anyway, it was a substantial bump for one day, just from one post shared, which was a good message for us to do that more. So, and then Joe's going to try to use multi-building announcements and put them on social media to increase the sharing of upcoming events, as opposed to just sharing photos and good news after the fact of events happening. And Joe and Steve will look into how to create Facebook events as a form, a way to invite people and let people know about the stuff that's coming up. And we are going to revisit ideas for emotional pressure. The next meeting is February 21st.
Questions for communication?
Well done, Liz.
All right. Long-range planning.
Those are mine, too. So first one, we already alluded to earlier with the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting we met a couple of weeks ago, and really, there's two parts to that. One is kind of on the innovation side, what would you like to see Reinbeck do a better job at or that we're not doing now? And the second one was how do the resources tie into that? We did get quite through a lot of the first part, but the second part of resources was not done. As Laura said, Lloyd's going to put that together, get it out to the group, and hopefully get it to the board before the budget season really kicks off. Two categories that really bubbled up with everybody was kind of career exposure and opportunities around internships, mentoring, that type of thing. And the second one was similar to the way CLS has a plan that follows the students through each grade, of how they learn what they learn, that type of stuff, is kind of carry that through the district and make a better effort of kind of teaching kids at their level. Second one was also something that was brought up earlier by John, talking about an advisory committee to kind of help kids have a person that they can trust and talk to as they go through the district as well. No meeting set either. Slipping.
Any questions for me? And personnel, Steve, it's your night.
Yeah, it's me, too. So after the RTA contract was signed, they reached out to us, wanted to see if we wanted to meet to talk about how it went and anything we wanted to change or possibly do different. So we did have that meeting on the 16th, and we discussed that in personnel a little bit. We also discussed the new contracts for our AA negotiations, hopefully to get that done before budget season really gets in and have a sense of the numbers there, too. Next meeting, February 21st. My birthday, Britney Donut.
All right. Any questions for us? Okay. Reinbeck collaboration?
Mark via speakerphone and I met with Gary Bassett last week. Our town supervisor was not able to attend that meeting, but we had a pretty good, I thought, meeting with Gary. We talked about four items specifically. One is the process of running fiber between the middle school, high school, and chancellor, which we've been working on for a while, using smart bond monies, but that has kind of gotten hung up with all the red tape with running fiber on the poles between here and chancellor. So Steve Jensen has been exploring an alternate by digging and laying the fiber in a conduit in the ground, and Gary Bassett will be working with us to try to expedite the permits that are necessary to do that work. We also have submitted an revised plan to Smart Bond Schools Committee because the plan has essentially changed, although they tell us it's going to be a quick turnaround, but I'll believe it when I see it. I know, roll eyes, I get it. I'd like to be, hopefully we can be ready to go as soon as that thing gets approved. That's why we're working with the village now to get all the permitting taken care of. Steve and I will be attending tomorrow night's village, I'm sure whether it's a board meeting or a subcommittee meeting, to talk about this fiber connection and why they should help us out with the permitting. So that's going to happen tomorrow night. We also talked about a project that we're collaborating with the village on, as well as with the Chamber and Northern Dutch's Hospital, to create the Village of Reinbeck as an autism-supported community, with some help from a grant from the Thompson Trust. I represent the school district on that committee, and we're going to be rolling out some training and outreach to not only the business community, but the faith-based community, nonprofits, other community groups, to make Reinbeck a more, what kind of word should I use, a more hospitable, welcoming place as individual organizations to those adults and children who are autistic, so that parents can take their autistic kids out to a restaurant and not feel like they have to be relegated to a back room or whatever, to make it more welcoming to our autistic population. So we're working on that with the village. We had a discussion about the traffic flow on Knollwood. Many of you may have seen the illuminated solar powered sign that the village erected on Knollwood on the 25 mile per hour speed zone, just to make sure everybody knows what their speed is as they're going down. And that by way to and from our elementary school, between our elementary school and our middle school, high school. So we thank the Village of Reinbeck for that investment. And we also talked, we kind of resurrected a conversation that we started back in the fall to co-sponsor with the village and potentially with the Northern Dutch's Hospital and with Cape A, an informational presentation for the community on opioid and other substance use. So that, hopefully that's going to happen in March. We're looking at, trying to set up a date in March for that. So, you know, three people talked about some pretty heavy issues, but things that are already getting some traction. So that's what's going on with our collaboration with the village, at least with the village at this stage in time. That's that.
Any questions? Thank you for resurrecting that opioid panel.
Yeah, I haven't forgotten it. It just got buried with a lot of other stuff. You know how that goes.
All right. We get to move on to good news. Does anybody have any good news? Joe?
I received a letter last week from Assemblyman Cahill's office notifying us that we will be the recipient of a science lab initiative, phase two. that we will be the recipient of a Science Lab Initiative Phase Two grant. You may recall, several years ago, we were recipients of Science Lab Initiative Phase One, which gave us the funds to purchase some new equipment for the physics lab in the high school. It was specifically targeted towards high schools. This grant is specifically targeted toward elementary. Mr. Wolfens in the office tonight, we've already started some conversations with him to get him thinking about what kinds of things might make the STEM lab an even more functional learning space for the kids in our classes, which is all of our classes. At Chancellor, Brett and I are attending a meeting Thursday, this Thursday afternoon over at the BOSI, Deals to BOSI, in New Paltz, where they're going to roll this grant out. And hopefully, we'll find out how much money is in it for us. The letter did not target a specific amount of money. So we'll make good use of whatever they are able to send our way. So I think that was good news worth mentioning.
Any other good news? I have two. The controller has seen fit to take us off his business dress list, as you all heard. That is great news. Thank you to the really hard work of Tom, the business office, steering that ship. I also got an email from Nancy Erlinger, first thing this morning. She couldn't be here, she had another thing she had to be at, but she asked me to read this bit of good news. We heard a little bit about it from John earlier. She says, although I cannot attend this evening's BOE meeting in person, I wanted to be sure our district applauded the visit of Thomas Grimes on January 10 during Good News. Mr. Grimes' Internet Safety Assembly on January 10 was one of the best I've seen in my 26 years here at RCSD. He shared a multitude of valuable messages with our youngsters, and I was especially impressed with this assembly as it addressed a critical topic and need in a kid-friendly way. The speaker was engaging and riveting with examples that tugged at the heart but were delivered to fit the audience. Mr. Grimes's true anecdotes were applicable, relatable, and current. His analogies were age-appropriate, yet powerful. The construct of his program was organized with repeating themes and worthwhile lessons our students needed to hear. All from my 11-year-olds in sixth grade to my 17-year-old daughter and her peers benefited tremendously from this program. Thank you to Mr. John Chemist and Dr. Ed Davenport for bringing Mr. Grimes to RCSD. Very nice. That was so well received. Any other good news? Old business. Public comment. Other? Mark?
I just want to mention, I heard earlier, rather anecdotally, that along the lines of, you know, too much communication is never too much. I heard that there were a few families from Chancellor that were not aware that with a three-hour delay, there's no lunch. So I just want to ask that if we're going to have a three-hour delay in the future, maybe we should mention that there's no lunch, just so that everybody gets the word. I know it's in the communication that went out earlier in the year, but, you know, just so that everybody gets a reminder.
In fact, it was in the communication that we reposted on our website just a couple of weeks ago, thanks to Jack's suggestion. So it's, you know, 'tis the season, it's in there. But thank you for mentioning it again. I guess we will know when we say it too many times, when people start telling us to stop and tell them there's no lunch at Chancellor.
Never know who you're going to hit.
Yeah.
We can be the message they get, just to keep it away, and for Chancellor students, no lunch.
Yeah, for those that are still.
Immediate, it's right there.
All right.
I did want to bring up one other, and unfortunately, the two folks who were here earlier who asked about it have left. But just so everybody knows, our 2019-20 budget calendar is posted on our website. I checked it from my phone during the meeting tonight, it's there, under Board of Education slash Budget slash 2019-20 Budget. So the entire budget calendar is spelled out there.
Thank you. All right, move on to action items. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, then, may I have a motion on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to grant tenure to Isabella Yusiewicz in the tenure area of Home Economics General effective February 2, 2019, and may be revoked by the Board of Education up until that time?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to implement a three-year phase-in of a change in the entry age for five-year-old children entering kindergarten from December 1, 2018, the current entry cutoff age for the 2018-19 school year, to November 1 for the 2019-20 school year, to October 1, 2019, for the 2020-21 school year, to September 1, 2021, for the 2021-22 school year?
So move. Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes, that's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the civil service appointment of Kristen Calafala to the position of food service helper at five hours per diem with a 26-week probationary period effective January 31, 2019, at a salary of Step One at an hourly rate of $12.30 in accordance with the food service helper hourly Step System rate?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve spring coaches for the 2018-19 school year? Baseball, varsity, George Nicolottis, $3,925. Junior varsity, Bill Morrissey, $2,865. Modified, Mike DiNatali, $2,331. Track, varsity, distance hurdles, Chris Sneed, $4,072. Varsity, sprinting and jumping, Justin Randall, $4,072. Varsity, throwing and pole vault, TBD, $4,072. Modified track, distance and throwing, Mark Berg, $2,503. Modified track, sprinting and jumping, TBD, $2,503. Tennis, varsity, TBD, $2,973. Softball, varsity, Scott Stiverson, $3,925. Junior varsity, TBD, $2,865. Modified softball, Dave Airstock, $2,331. Crew, varsity girls, Rich Humphrey, $4,577. Varsity boys, Casey Hetty, $4,577. Novice, Evan Russell, $3,167. Lacrosse, varsity, TBD, $3,925.
Second.
Any discussion? When does spring sports begin?
Yeah, March. Late March.
March 4.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussions of?
Contract negotiation. Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, we're moving into executive session. Thank you.